All right, we're going to call our meeting to order on Tuesday, October 21st at 6:30 PM. We'll begin with the invocation and the pledge. Heavenly Father, we pray for our local government leaders, that they may be filled with wisdom and discernment. Help us to support one another in our roles and to remember that we are here to serve the people of our community. May our actions reflect your love and justice. We especially pray for our first responders and military at home and abroad. And in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3 is public comments. First on this is Kristy Smith for public comment. No? Aaron, you're going to wait the do on the item?
We did not.
Okay. And Mark?
Same.
All right. Then no public comment tonight. All right, we're going to skip ahead to item 5, new business, because we have guests with us here today to make a presentation, and we will take item 4, consent agenda, after new business. So item A is a presentation by Twinwood U.S. We have Mark Kilkeny from Twinwood here. He's going to be joined by Aaron Carpenter and Elizabeth Cohn. You'll take this in however you prefer.
Okay. Great. Can I turn this around? Speak it off? Apologies to the public. I'm Mark Kilkeny. I'm Vice President of Development for Twinwood U.S. And it's my first time here to speak before council since joining Twinwood seven and a half years ago. But just wanted to take the opportunity tonight to kind of bring you current on things going on with Twinwood, but also maybe introduce Twinwood to some of you who may not be that familiar with it. We have several items on the agenda tonight. B through E, I believe, will be taken care of by the city attorney and our council, Aaron Carpenter, because those are kind of housekeeping items related to requirements within the development agreement that Twinwood has with Simonton. So, but I thought I'd take just a couple of minutes and tell you a little bit about what we have going on. Of course, Twinwood consists of about just under 14,000 acres in the entire portfolio, and that equates to about 4,500 acres up in Waller County, and then about 9,500 acres down here in Fort Ben County. So our property stretches basically from the southeast corner of Interstate 10 and Woods Road, all the way down along what is called Twinwood Parkway, but down to Hunt, and then west of Poole Hill, on down to 1093, and through the downtown area of Simonton, and then on south along 1489 to the Brazos River. Our focus the last seven or eight years has been primarily our uplands business park, which is located up in the Waller County area there on the east-west side of Woods Road, just south of I-10. We've developed over 300-some acres up there, and it's primarily large, light industrial and assembly-type users up there. To give you an idea of what we have up in that area, we have buildings that range anywhere from maybe 6,000 square feet to some developments we've done with Clay Development, a Houston-based developer. Their largest building is about 750,000 square feet. To give you an idea, that particular building, of which there are two up there, have about 80 truck bays on either side of the building. So they're large distribution-type buildings. We also have a manufacturing company called Man Energy, which is a German-based company that is involved in large diesel engines and compressor systems for energy-related business. They have a servicing facility and about 30,000 square feet of office space for engineers and others. We also have two of the largest foreign solar panel manufacturers now located in the business park. One is called Wari, which is, I believe, the largest Indian solar panel manufacturer. They have about a half million square feet that they're working on assembling solar panels in. And then we also have Elan Energy, which is the largest Turkish manufacturer of solar panels. So along with that, we have other distribution and service-type things that range anywhere from a coffee and spice manufacturer that puts packaging together in a small building to what now is going to be our largest employer up there, which is a company called T-Mike, which is a, they're building 200,000-square-foot facility that will employ about a little over 300 people sometime in the next year and a half. But that's a joint venture between Toshiba and Mitsubishi Industries. And they're going to be manufacturing large electronic control panels. So they're under construction right now, and they're building. And, you know, we're really pleased with the overall business park and things going on. We also have an agricultural chemical company that just deals in bulk chemical mixing and assembly, and then some other smaller companies up there, service companies in smaller buildings. We have, as I said, it's a little over 300 acres that we have developed right now. We're working on our next phase, which will add some additional acreage, because we still have a number of people up in that particular corridor along I-10 between Katy and Brookshire that are looking for manufacturing facilities. So we're pretty pleased with that. As you move further south, many of you probably know, because we constructed Twinwood Parkway, which starts up at Woods Road, just south of I-10, comes through the west side of our business park, crosses 359, and then extends on further down across the county line and dead ends right now at Hunt Road. We have been working for the last couple of years closely with Fort Ben County, and initially Commissioner Myers, and now Commissioner Morales, on the extension of Twinwood Parkway from Hunt on down to 1093. It will tie in, we've already cleared the right-of-way in there, so it will intersect, I believe, at Lory Lake. And so we're hopeful, the plans, engineering plans and everything are all done. We're just waiting for some agreements with Fort Ben County and funding, because we do have a long-term agreement with Fort Ben County that deals with reimbursements for portions of the project as we finish them. So we've built it as far as we can right now. Before the county auditor said they need to have more room in their bond program for extension to that, but we're excited that we think we're going to get that put together here soon, and that should give a nice way to get up to Interstate 10 fairly quick and without a lot of extra curves and things like we have along 1489. But, so as you get down to 1093, we've been working on a lot of long-term plans for the area in and around Simonton intersection proper, but nothing right now that's something that I can disclose, because we're still working on a lot of drainage issues with the Fort Ben County Drainage District. We had done a lot of preliminary drainage design, and then, of course, with the new Atlas 14 data that came out in the last couple of years, it's caused us to have to go back and reevaluate a lot of the drainage programs here, so that we can move not only the water that comes down, falls on the land, but also we have to intercept and take care of routing the Brazos River if and when it comes up out of its banks. So pretty complicated engineering feat, but we have a really good engineering firm in LJA that's been working on this project for a number of years, and so we continue to work on that. Something that probably most of you have seen where our next biggest activity going on is on what we call the estate property, which is on 1489, just south of town. We finished a wall and kind of grand entry. I'll say kind of grand entry. It was a pretty entry. Our owner, Mr. Sam Purno, wanted to make a statement there with that, and I think we've accomplished that. But we've been working back behind there on a number of the lakes in that area for the last three years almost, because those are very much an integral part of moving water from Valley Lodge area in extreme events through that area and on south to the Brazos. We have finished the, pretty much, all of the lakes in that area there that we need to for full development, but we are now working on our first subdivision in there, which we call Orchid Estates. We have finished the first 25 lots in that neighborhood. There'll ultimately be about 150 lots in that neighborhood. Typical lot size is 100 by 150 feet, which is a pretty good-sized lot, you know, not acreage, but what we think from a marketing standpoint, our studies have told us, we have a definite market for. But we've delivered the first 25 lots. We've selected our builders, and we're proud to say that our two builders that will be initially in the subdivision there will be Partners in Building, and then Frederick Harris Homes, which is Newmark Cohn's high-end company. They've been working in the Sugar Land area and others, and of course, Partners in Building's been active in this 1093 corridor for a number of years, from Weston Lakes on back to, you know, Fullbrook and those areas. You know, we anticipate putting together, well, our marketing plan and everything is pretty much put together. You'll start seeing some advertising online with the builders pushing that stuff. Each builder will build a model, and then they're required to have other performance in having spectrums of some sort on. But we, it appears that initial sales prices will start somewhere just under $2 million and go up from there on these lots. So long-term in that area, I think we'll do the 150 lots we have in there, and then we have worked on some conceptual plans long-term for more of those lots, plus mostly 1- to 5-acre type lots eventually. And many of those will be on public streets, not private streets, which the initial subdivision is. And so it's a pretty big project that's taken a lot to get there on because of a lot of the regulatory things primarily related to floodplain issues, but we're pretty excited about it. We've got a number of other things that are kind of in the hopper that are not quite far enough along to talk about right now, but our intent is to come back here, you know, when needed, to answer questions and tell you more about what we have coming. So that's briefly kind of what we have going on.
Thanks so much for sharing.
Sure.
That's a great big picture. I would be remiss if I didn't ask the question I think everybody wants to ask you from the council side, is what would it need to be true for the estate property to become part of the city limits?
Well, we are working, of course, city limits, I think, go through a portion of the estate property now. I think some of the items we have tonight on here deal with realigning some of the ETJ boundary lines as part of our requirement, but I, the, we fully expect long-term through the development agreement that it will become, you know, a portion of the city limits as we get further along in development. We still have quite a bit of infrastructure to get in place, but we have our initial water plant, sewer plant, and trunk lines are in and functioning, and the estate property is already on that central system, and these lots will be too. We have also worked with Sea Energy on the extension of natural gas lines, and they've come from Rogers and Poole Hill all the way down to 1093 out here and down to our entrance. So, you know, hopefully here at some point in time, that could be a potential opportunity for them to extend lines elsewhere. They are a registered public utility that we're dealing with there, and, you know, may bring, you know, natural gas to service to the area here at some point. I know they've worked with you all on their franchise agreement or whatever they needed to have to come through the city limits. And then we've also worked a deal with a company called Fiber Light for fiber optic installation in the neighborhood, but they've come from the, they have facilities there adjacent to the post office in that service building there, and they've extended fiber optic lines down into the entrance. So we're, you know, there's more, but we are aware that, you know, a number of other people have fiber systems in place along here, but Fiber Light will be servicing the neighborhood and at least Twinwood facilities initially.
Sounds right. I bet they're more reliable than AT&amp;T fiber.
I'm not going to make any comments on that. Other than I sat in my office a couple of weeks ago with no phone, no cellphone, and no internet for a full day. So I'm sympathetic to everybody else out here that goes through that.
Can we ask questions or what?
Sure, Don.
Well, it's kind of a question, I guess, with all this development Twinwood's doing, and of course, the city needing to be partnered, let's start discussing, trying to get a real, I'm not complaining about our post office, but a post office, we have delivery and city assignments, and it's going to take a few years to get it done, but I think we should, let's rejuvenate that to try to get the post office here.
Yeah.
So we can have city assignments and actually be delivered.
Right.
This is not a complaint to any post office.
No, but it's time.
Yeah.
With growth coming this way, that that's, we need more of the portable building.
This little town's got a little bit of little anymore. We don't want to be like Foulshers Post Office.
Overheads.
But no, we are definitely interested in partnering with the city in getting service at least closer to, you know, to our homeowners, and we'll be glad to work on that.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
All the growth up north is fantastic, the ETJ, what you're doing over there for all the warehouses and all of that business. How does that benefit us and what it benefits us?
The, from the development agreement that was executed back in 14 or 16?
2015.
Yeah. Allowed the city to extend its ETJ.
ETJ strip.
Strip up and around the business park, literally all the way up to that. So we created kind of a bubble in the process, and that was done to, really to create some consistency in our development plan and not have acreage subject to Brookshire's rules, subject to Foulshers rules and others. So that, with that bubble in place, I think the vision was that ultimately, as that develops out and the infrastructure put in place, the city certainly has the ability in the future to go all the way up to that, virtually to that Woods Road-I-10 intersection and annex.
Well, see, the issue with that now is that you have to ask us, I mean, is the whole ETJ to the city taking over and expanding with the new rules and regulations, is it not where you actually almost have to ask us to take you into the city?
Well, under the terms of the development agreement, how done it is with the expansion in the area, the idea is to allow for there to be a period of time where the district, the special district within this ETJ area can reimburse Twinwood for its eligible infrastructure costs at that time and under the terms of the development agreement. If you're within the ETJ, then it ties to the special district at hand, which generally aligns with the property. So the Twinwood Business Park has Waller 18. If that's fully reimbursed and built out and the other conditions are met, that's when you would have the annexation trigger. And that's in contrast to the general law in the state of Texas now, which generally gives landowners a lot of power to get out of ETJs. Here, we've set this in motion in 2015, and we settled this early.
Yeah, in fact, part of the cleanup or things that we're doing tonight, the legislature lasts, not this current session that was just over, but the previous one, allowed for landowners to remove themselves from ETJ. We took advantage of that and removed a significant amount of acreage from Brookshire's ETJ, and part of what we're asking tonight in these agreements is to put, to realign that bubble and put that within this development agreement.
In Simonton.
Yes.
In Simonton.
Yeah.
Does that sound good?
So we're trying to, we're adding more acreage, actually, tonight if that will present.
So there's one thing he touched on that rang a bell. You said district reimbursement, right? Do we have an agreement where we have to pay you something over for your period of time or reimburse for anything that you're doing?
No, I don't, for city funding.
I believe so.
I don't believe so.
So we've heard rumors that we have, we're going to owe you money, going to owe you money. You remember that, Mayor?
I do know, but it's also off-topic of what we're talking about.
What is with them? Is it not with them?
Well, I think, feel free to speak to that if you want, but it's also, you know, under an agreement, and I think what you're talking about is related to tax and not.
I have no idea. There's no liability potential for the city, and so I just wanted, since they're here.
Yeah, I can't answer that offhand. The agreements, like the mayor mentioned, are a couple of hundred pages long and so forth.
And I would say, under the agreements, there is a concept that if sales tax is generated within the ETJ under a strategic partnership agreement that allows for collaboration, that 50% of it is split with the mud, 50% is with the city. We've previously got that extended to contemplate some commercial property on I-10, but that would be all sales tax generated by the Twinwood, the sharing. I wouldn't say that it aligns to, say, a spending of any budget funds of Simonton.
Okay.
And that's on the development agreements. I'm familiar with that, as the one counsel.
Thanks so much, Mark. Appreciate it. So Aaron, you're going to walk us through a little bit?
I think so. Do my best, and I really want to thank Mark for offering an introduction to counsel of the projects, and want to introduce myself as well. My name's Aaron Carpenter. I'm an attorney at Allen, Bud &amp; Humphries Robinson. I'm joined by my colleague Elizabeth Cohn, also an attorney at Allen, Bud &amp; Humphries Robinson. We serve as counsel to Twinwood and various of the special districts in the Twinwood development area, mostly municipal utility districts, also municipal management district. We have really four action items on the agenda tonight. They really relate to three distinct development goals, and I'll kind of go one, two, three, and walk through counsel with them, and then I can pause and take questions as needed or, you know, answer questions after the presentation. The first real topic relates to the boundaries and jurisdiction in Twinwood MUD 1. Twinwood MUD 1 is a district that was created by the TCEQ back in the 80s. It had boundaries that had kind of ceased to be relevant to the development of Orchid Estates, which is going to be in the jurisdiction of MUD 1. There's a map that's up there, and you can kind of see what we're talking about here. Give it a moment to see if it can stick. It's really that area in purple. That is mostly within the boundaries of Twinwood MUD 1 now, which is that dark blue line. The intent is for all of that district to be in the actual ETJ of Simonton, and some of it is currently within unincorporated, I'm sorry, unincorporated Fort Ben County. So we have a petition from Twinwood as landowner to bring it into the ETJ of Simonton and make it subject to the development agreement for the area within the Simonton ETJ, and that's really the first part of the request. There's also the area outlined in red, which is some acreage outside of the current boundaries of Twinwood MUD 1. That'll be brought into with the council action, the Simonton ETJ, and then we would want the mud to annex that land into the mud. That will allow all the taxpayers in Orchid Estates to be part of the mud, which will be part of the funding of the infrastructure, and then when there's a, any annexation of that special district down the line, it would all align to the development plan of that subdivision. That's really the first main item for tonight. The second item is the ETJ strip that Mark had alluded to, that really encompasses almost the entirety of the Twinwood development area, and that's, I think, the other attachment that we have here to kind of show it.
I'm going to get a skate station. I'm going to get on that.
This is a separate development agreement in 2015, when Twinwood owned a lot of land, and allowed for the kind of boundary of the Twinwood ETJ to extend all the way to that line in green, like the lime-green line. In that ETJ strip agreement, there was a concept that said, okay, if Twinwood acquires additional land or other land becomes eligible, it can come to council like we're doing tonight and try to move the boundaries of that ETJ strip outwards, so that more land comes under the protection of the Twin, of the Simonton Development Agreement and brings it into the rights and obligations under that development agreement. So the lines that you see in blue are outward and grow the area. That's the acreage that Brookshire has released from its ETJ. They did that by ordinance in 2023. There's also a portion of green in the Twinwood Business Park that kind of juts in and has a little bit of development area exposed. We're also proposing to plug that gap on the east end, so that no jurisdiction to the east, if the law ever changed, could then jot into that jurisdiction. That's kind of the second item for tonight, which I believe is item 5D. The last item is just some housekeeping that we do every few years on the board composition for Simonton Management District. We do this every few years, just to kind of renew the board composition. It's not particularly active right now, but we have three directors who are willing to serve, Dan McDonald, Scott Narenstein, and Cynthia Reader. They remain willing to serve, and we're just asking for a renewal of their terms like we've done in the past. That's it at a high level, but I want to pause and take questions from the council, if any, and I really appreciate the time to come here and outline these documents.
Thank you very much. For sure, appreciate that.
Thank y'all.
I have a question on.
Just one second. If you'll just one second. I'd like to press you again. Okay. No, you're fine. Go ahead.
Ready to step child.
Not exactly.
Thank you. The question I have is on drainage. Y'all just talked about it earlier, so Brazos, Brazos River is right there. I'm sure in the back down where you are, you actually touch the Brazos someplace where you can channel water there, not have to come above 1093 at all?
It's probably the other map that he's referring to, Stacey.
Oh, is that?
Oh, it's on the map. On the, on the western, that would be the Brazos on the western edge of the map, right?
So today, there's a section in 1093 that actually dumps water across the road into, you know, into the village.
Okay.
It's a small little channel that comes in and ends up going back all the way through the drainage canal back to Brazos River. So I know that's Twinwood property. It has trees on it. It's, the section has the trees and some development. I'm just concerned because we flood, everybody floods around here, but your new development, y'all done a good, I look at it as a fantastic job of digging lots of the ponds and building up and bringing the levels to probably what we have, bringing all our houses too. But you're going to have to drain it somewhere. There is a canal right at the front of the park, right where you go to the end of the city right here. And there's a canal that goes this way, right?
Right.
And it looks like the water's going east.
Yes. That would be, and it goes through the equestrian center and then on the ground. Now, what, what we've done with Fort Ben County Drainage District is everything kind of from about that drainage way you're talking about on further west and south on that side of, on the west side of 1489, it all goes down to the Brazos and without crossing 1489. That, we only have just a few acres on that north end that go through the drainage way you've mentioned. And we're having to account for that as it moves west. Fort Ben County Drainage District is really sensitive, is, as you well understand, about us not adding any additional flows, particularly to what ends up in Bessie's Creek.
Right.
Because it zigs and zags every which way. But we are currently working on a drainage plan for the land we have west, east of the equestrian center. And we take, except for the front few acres that are along 1093, all of that is going directly south to the Brazos. There'll be ultimately a large channel, almost adjacent Daly Park. And we'll be collecting water from the west, the east side of 1489 and south of 1093, except for just some frontage here. And all of that goes back there and down to the Brazos.
Excellent. Thank you. And the only other question I have as far as drainage is your northern portion of land that you own, some of it is right above the section that I own. That actually drains through a canal that goes through, it's Fort Ben's canal, but it goes through my property out to the river. And so you have hundreds or a thousand something acres up there. And right now, it comes and it does, we, you allowed us to put a channel on the northern part by Sur to go into your Oxbo Lake, I think it is.
Right.
So all of that Oxbo Lake, it ends up having to go someplace, right, eventually when the river comes up. And so it has to go to the river and then the river does a few little curves and then comes back down, hits that channel. So I don't know if you have any plans to develop in that particular section in the next 10, 15, 20 years?
We have not done the required drainage impact analysis for the county on any of that acreage yet. We've been focused here and down, down here. And then, of course, everything up in the business park goes into Brookshire Creek and then ultimately down through Western Lakes and Bessie's Creek. But we detain all of that now up there. We have five big detention basins already in place up there.
With water streaming up. Does this count?
Oh, well, actually, the fountains along Interstate 10 are pure amenity lakes. They're at natural ground. We didn't, there is no detention.
Okay.
Capacity within those. But the big lakes that you see along Twinwood Parkway are, all have, you know, eight to 10 feet of freeboard in order for drainage.
Very informative. I really appreciate y'all coming to this earlier. Appreciate you coming.
So we have it on, it all goes through the housing development, work fortune? Is that what you call it?
Orchid Estates.
And it's all been permitted through Fort Ben County?
Yes.
Make sure we get that so everyone.
We spent, I don't even want to quote how much we spent on the drainage plan and the lakes and detention basins, but it was all closely monitored by Fort Ben County Drainage District or Fort Ben County engineers. Even our street and utility construction was monitored by the county and inspected on the private streets, even though they are private. So, but we, everything was done to county standards and that's a requirement within the development agreement, I believe, that we're subject to the county's regulations.
I know for myself only, I appreciate Twinwood wanting to be in our ETJ, not in Brookshire's, not in Fort Ben County, because that's cowboy show. Almost anything goes over the water, stormwater. So I think it's great. We have, you know, better parker and it's not divided up. I think it's one.
One more question, if I could, Madam Mayor. When you're building, are all of your roads going to be cemented with drainage and sewer to that type of thing? Or will you end up like what we have with some roads that need maintenance?
Right now, Orchid Estates is concrete curb and gutter. With underground storm sewer system. I mentioned that we have some conceptual plans for, you know, two to five acre tracts. Those will most likely be concrete streets, but open ditch, just because the, for the density, putting all of that in pipe gets extremely expensive when you can move it, you know, by, by open ditch, particularly when you have larger lots like that. You don't have near the impermeable cover that you would in the neighborhood.
Thanks.
Thanks so much.
I'll leave this up here.
Oh, I appreciate that. So I think that we have, keep me on track, Phil, but I think that we want to take item five.
C.
C first.
Yes.
Because it makes sense to do the approval of the ordinance before we put it into.
We need to bring it into our ETJ before we consent to it being in MUD, in essence. So that's the word.
So step one is.
So C, then B, then D.
Okay. So we'll go to item 5C. Consider and take action to approve the City of Simonton Ordinance Number 2025-08 ETJ Expansion. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept ordinance and accept and approve ordinance 2025-08, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simonton, Texas, approving the petition of Twinwood U.S. Inc. to expand the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction to include all such land included in petition according to section 42 dot 022 Texas Local Government Code and containing other provisions related to the subject.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. So moving to item 5B. Consider and take action to approve City of Simonton Ordinance 2025-07 Consent Annexation into MUD 1. Do we have a motion?
I make the motion.
Thank you, Angela. Do we have a second?
I'm second.
Justin? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Moving to item 5D. Consider and take action to approve City of Simonton Ordinance 2025-09, the ETJ strip expansion. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve item 5D.
Thank you, Andy. Do we have a second?
One second.
How are we? Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I think it would be appropriate if the actual ordinance was read into the record so that future council anyone hearing can see it as written, just in case the paper gets missed. Oh, I got my papers. Those are up there too. Such great reading.
The fact that we did have to drop them back to see the paper makes it harder to find. Eric Beningadat is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simonton, Texas, to consent and approve the petition of Twinwood U.S. Incorporated, requesting adjustment of the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction by adding approximately 86.7082 acres and removing approximately 57.09 acres, containing various provisions relating to the foregoing subject and making certain findings, making certain findings related to the same. This is ordinance 2025-09. Do we have a motion?
You already have a motion, the second mayor says just.
I'm sorry. You were absolutely right about that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Last item on the topic for today, 5E. Consider and take action to approve City of Simonton Resolution 2025-03, reappointing City of Simonton Management District Number 1.
Madam Mayor.
And that was, Dan McDonald, Scott Aaronstein, and Cynthia Aver, who is CJ Aver. Their term ends June 1st. I'm sorry, their new term would be for Dan McDonald, ending 2027. Scott Aaronstein and Cynthia Aver would be ending 2029. Yes?
Madam Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 25-03, Resolution of City Council, City of Simonton, appoint Simonton Management District Number 1, District Board Members, as mentioned.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Angela. Any discussion?
Is your four-year term or? Just curious.
Well, one is a, pulled over and they're typically four-year term.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you all so much for coming. You're welcome to stay, but we sure appreciate you coming to talk us about the project.
Hope you'll come back.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next, next meeting.
All right. Next on the agenda is item 5F. Consider and take action to approve the MOU between all jurisdictions within Fort Ben County. One second. This, an MOU is a memorandum of understanding. This is between the City of Simonton and Fort Ben County Emergency Operations primarily. You may remember that last year, we, two years ago, we developed official plan and inserted it as a portion of the camp, plan of the entire county. This relates to that and is an ongoing renewal of understanding of who is doing which portion when it comes to deploying in an emergency. So this memorandum of understanding is made in, entered into by, between Fort Ben County, a body corporate and political under the laws of the state of Texas, acting by and through its governing body, Fort Ben County Commissioners Court. And all Fort Ben County jurisdictions that are legally signed to the Fort Ben County Emergency Operation Plan collectively referred to as parties. So it's called the, once again, the memorandum of understanding between all jurisdictions within Fort Ben County. Counsel?
I make a motion to approve the MOU between all jurisdictions with Fort Ben County.
I'm second.
Thank you, Andy. Any discussion?
Just one question. Any, has anything changed from the last review?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. All right. Item 5G. Consider and take action to approve tree trimming in Valley Lodge, Sections 2 and 3, by Yellowstone for $16,625. This bid is not changed. Counsel has agreed in.
In the budget.
Right, in the budget. So this brings it technically for your agreement so that we can turn over the approval to Yellowstone to get started on the work.
I make a motion to approve the Yellowstone contract to trim trees in Section 2 and 3 for $16,625.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. When are we going to do those trees that are in the ditch? We talked about it being done alongside of this.
I've requested a separate bid to be, they need to come out and propose another, a separate bid, so we'll handle it.
Okay.
On their own. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item H, the quote for the computers is not in the packet and it wasn't sent out, so we'll move that to a future agenda.
I'm sorry.
Item. It's not in everybody's packet. I didn't discover until this afternoon, so we'll hold it on the future.
All right.
Item I is consider and take action to select and approve streaming audio or visual system for the City of Simonton City Council chambers from Legit Works in the amount of $20,897.67. So counsel, in your packet, you have two bids for item 5I. The first is from Legit Works. They've included information about their company, a description of the scope of work, the live tree stream setup and installation, which would be here in chambers and partially in the hall. They've given you a buy item price description, so you know what items they think would be for to install and prices by item. Payment schedule and terms are included. Their total bid is $20,897.67. The second estimate you have in your packet is from CBO Services. They've included what equipment they recommend and breakdown between equipment and services for doing labor programming and setup. There's not any further description that's included. CBO Services bid is $29,384. So the recommendation, if we were to choose a provider, at this point, Legit Works has given a much more thorough bid. They've given detail about what they would install and explain their scope of work. Do we have any discussion or questions about the bids, since this is a pretty big project and pretty technical? Has anybody done research about this since we've had the last week of what the equipment pieces are?
Yes, ma'am. So I would like the motion to table this and I'll give the explanations as to why. So what's really needed is a workshop. The problem with this is that there's. The problem with this is that there's technical issues with what they're proposing, there's things that are actually missing, this is a scope of work mainly for streaming and not necessarily for everything needed in this room to, for us to have better sound, et cetera. Impress has to come into this, Legit, and what they're proposing here, we have lots of questions. For instance, everybody should be concerned about the speakers. Look at, go look at, the GL codes, where we're going to put this, I would have a question on. If it's a fixed contract, or when will the equipment, where will the equipment be housed?
Do you mind if I stop you for a second? Can you give me an example of what you mean about the concern, we should all be concerned about the speakers? Just can you give me more, so I can have a good description?
All right, so returning to the live stream, and you look at the equipment. I'll ask you, do you see any speakers?
So you're saying, you don't have a concern about the speakers they proposed, you just don't see speakers?
There aren't any in here, in the posters. Next, you want me to continue?
Yeah, I mean, if you could give me some detail, that's what we're looking for. I didn't hear anything about it before, so let me dig nuts now.
Okay, next note, where will all this equipment be housed?
In the hallway. But, so a plan, a plan of where I want to put the plant of where the equipment belongs?
Yes. Next question, who's going to operate it? Next question, like to have a full network diagram? How does it interconnects with all of our internet? And we have internet services from Impress right now, we have from the mobile...
Support from them.
Excuse me?
Support from them. They don't...
Understood. So, they actually support our internet access. I've never seen the closet, I'd like to, on what equipment's actually there that interfaces with our, all of our ATT, mobile, all the internet, plus the new ATT fiber. I'd like to see it, just to see what we have now. This probably ought to be changed. And if we're going to do this much work in the building, we ought to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the long term. Okay, so, just, the question was network diagram. An implementation plan, how would we actually implement this?
Can you say more about that?
Excuse me?
Can you say more about that?
Sure, so you're going to come in, you're going to have, we know how easy it is to plug in a little microphone here, right? Because they have, on the microphones, they're getting six of them. Not even going to question the price right now, I'm not even going to question it, we have to do a little research. The total cost, the implementation plan is, well, we're going to put those in, where's this other box going to go that goes along with where you're going to put the equipment, and who's going to operate it, and how it's going to operate?
Yeah, I got those.
Okay, you have one camera. One camera with an 80-degree view, okay? So if we wanted to have a picture of who's out there, and a picture of who's out here, and somebody switching between the two, being able to see it, you don't have one camera with an 80-degree, not even a 90-degree, or even a 180-degree capability.
Yeah, some of this, they, we spoke about, but if it's not, you know, it needs to be laid out so everybody can...
So, let me ask you, who's weak? Because when we have these kind of technical...
Me, when I'm going to ask them to come out and work on, here's the basics of what we need, tell us what you would recommend. So that's why we have this, and we need to go through it.
I appreciate that, and I know you're very, very busy, but what I'm saying is, if we have somebody on staff or around that can help you with the technical specs and things like this, we should use them.
We should.
Okay, next. For Impress, who is our service provider, they have a network integration and security assessment of what this is going to do, because you are going out live, you can have connectivity. And pretty much, if we could answer all of those questions, I'd be prepared to make some kind of a move, even though it's not a complete technical assessment of everything needed to do everything we've asked to be done.
Hey, we'd like it to be ASAP, but this is not an urgent emergency, we have to make a rash decision for it.
Absolutely.
So if the rest of the council is on board with this list of things to ask for, I'm happy to get...
I'd like to add one more to, just to make sure it's scalable. That's probably my biggest, if we could add two of them, maybe two.
Yes. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, well, if we think of something, let me know. We do have a motion on the table, to table this item.
Do we have any sort of goal, when we like to have this project implemented?
Our ask has been that we would, if we could get it approved and work with their timeline, to have this in place by end of year, so that January, we can start up fresh and new.
So I really appreciate you commenting, Madam Mayor, on the fact that this doesn't have to be a rush, but it does have to be what we need for the long term.
We've got to live with it for a long time.
That's right.
Make sure it's right. Okay, we have a motion to table by Eric, a second from Andy, and any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, I sure appreciate that. All right, we are not going to executive session tonight, so we'll skip items 7 and, 6, 7, and 8.
Madam Mayor, I would like to call an executive session.
It's how it usually works, a fill. Can you give us some...
Yeah. So...
We don't have any advanced directive about going into executive session, I just said we're not doing that, but Eric, Councilmember Doohan would like to...
I mean, if it's consultation with legal counsel, let's come over and have a conversation with you real quick, and you can decide. Well, I mean, I would rather decide in, like, we can go into session, and if it's not something, well, we can come back out and say, obviously, no action's going to be taken either way, but that way, you know, we can discuss what it is that may be important.
Okay. Well, if that's what we do, can we get other business done first?
We have to do item 4. Sure.
Yeah, go back and do consent.
Let's do consent, and then we'll go to the executive session. Okay, back to item 4, the consent agenda. Item A, the monthly income report. I'm going to remove from consent, and we can discuss that separately. So that leaves item 4B, monthly payment listing report, 4C, the monthly financial report, and 4D, the minutes for the August 19, 2025 budget workshop number one on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, you removed 4A?
I did.
Okay. Just give me one second, please, because I have notes. I'd like to remove 4B. Discussion?
All right, we can remove item 4B, that leaves items 4C and D, monthly financial report, and the minutes for the August 19 budget workshop.
I need to remove 4C. Sorry. I've done a lot of homework, yes.
And how about D? Do we need to go through that, or the corrections?
Okay.
Are we ready to just leave D in consent?
Uh, no problem with D.
All right.
Or E?
4D, the consent agenda, is the minutes for August 19 budget workshop number one. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Angela.
Second.
Thank you, Andy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's unanimous. Monthly payment listing report, that's item B for August 2025. Eric, what are your questions?
Oh, you want to do A first?
No, I'll get to A in a minute.
Okay. So, I don't actually have a question on item B, but I have, maybe it's more of a request, Madam Mayor?
Well, we just pulled this item from the agenda, because there's a problem with it, so can you tell us what?
Yes. Problem I have with item B is that, when we look at item B in and of itself, it's basically kind of a summary, it has no GL codes on it for us to ever match back to any budget anywhere, right? And so, when I'm looking at them, I'm like, well, what can I really determine? Okay, we had a credit card, then we had X, Y, and Z, and it sums up to $42,000. Because I had fund you training, and Stacy, you can maybe help out, there's another report that's the same report, exact same report, but gives you detail. And that report, and Stacy, you won't look at it?
No, I have it. I have a copy, and we had decided that the payment listing report, we thought was sufficient enough for council, so...
So, I guess...
I can print the payment report, in essence of saving paper, this report is, you know, 20 pages, and this report is two.
So, I don't care about the paper.
Every vendor that we paid. Yeah, so the people that aren't looking at it, it says every vendor that was paid, the date of the invoice, the date it was actually paid, a dollar amount. And what method, basically, if it was a check or a credit card bill?
So, I'm sorry, I did not prepare for this to put in front of everybody, and I apologize for that, but I think it should be put in front of the council, and then the council can decide if they would rather see this, because I would rather see this, and it's detailed, because it is more detailed.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, it does give you the GL codes, that's the only difference. And if there's a way to alter this payment listing report, to add the GL codes, I can certainly do that.
So, I would kind of agree with you, except that when you get into some of these, where you have one total here, but there's multiple checks being cut, that's more detailed.
Okay.
That's it, I mean, it's more detailed here. So if somebody had a question of the checks, or the numbers of credit cards, or things like that, they will not see it on the summary sheet.
Okay.
That's it, that's all I have.
So, the payment listing report, item 4B, for the month of August, we are not trying to correct errors, we're not seeing that everything's missing, just like, you're making a request for a different report style.
Right, and not anywhere else to do it, other than that at the time that we bring this up.
Or call me.
Yeah, we're not calling you.
So item 4B, do we have a motion on the monthly payment listing report?
All of that is public record at any time, correct? We can go in and see it, everybody, anybody and everybody can go in and see that report.
No. What do you mean? This is not on the website?
The details.
It's public information, anyone could ask.
For the detail, but the other report?
If it's in the budget, in the packet for a meeting, which it is every month, it will be attached.
I agree.
Someone could see that. Whichever versions we're using.
But currently, it's not. If we agree to put it into the monthly meetings as the detailed version, then it wouldn't...
If you want to replace one, or we've done that, no problem, whichever version council wants, we can certainly change it.
So we should just give you, we'll give you input, right, after, whenever, anybody can just give you input on which one they'd like to see, and you can make your consensus. All right.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for item 4B. I'll say it.
Andy? Justin? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous. All right, item C, the monthly financial report for August 2025.
So...
You said you had concerns or questions?
Yes.
So we'll start with you, Eric.
Okay, thank you. I'll look at you, if anybody else might have. On the report, and I'm guessing it's, Stacy has to answer, but we're good, so let's go to page 5, capital. Year-to-date actual $189,000. Budget remaining on $189,000, I don't know, was there any budget in 2025 for, for there to be a variance? We didn't have any estimate?
So that's the building, the addition on the building.
So it started with some kind of money, right, $200,000, whatever?
No, it was grant money, held from the previous year. So it'll be squared up, I think you'll find that it's spent. So if you're looking at the actual, but the encumbered money from the previous year, then it has to be taken from the account, you put it in the budget, but then you take it from the grant account, you pay the bill, you post it in. When we close out the year, you'll see that the expense and the income will wind up. We haven't done budget adjustments for the end of the year yet.
Okay, let me see if I have a couple more. Quick, I'm flipping pages, guys, in a second. Ren? Never mind, it's on the next year's budget, where the things change for the EDCs, so this budget, it was still in here, and then we transferred, and the next budget is not going to be in the 19 category, it's going to be in the 203 category. Correct?
Income, yes.
Yes, okay. So I have no other questions.
Okay.
And I'm moved we accept it as presented.
I have one question. Very first one, the general, Madam Lawrence, the current $1,217, the budget is $24,000, I'm assuming we just had to pay out for that.
Right, so that's, it's income, so $1,217 of income, we budgeted that we thought we would make $24.
And it just may not come in yet in August?
It's just super slow as you get to the end of the year.
I figured, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
We're 85% collected through the files.
September, next month.
Right.
September, the budget should show that.
Yes. Okay, and you make the motion to approve?
I made the motion. Eric said. Eric made the motion, I second it.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item A, 4A, the monthly income report. If you go to page 3 of 4, and look at the first line that says general deposit on 814, we gave it to you all today, on the outside of your book. So that line, 1434, is a receipt number. You'll see that 1434, 35, 36, and 37 are all sales tax deposits. So first of all, sales tax does not belong in this report, Stacy, correct me if I say it wrong. This report should be what they call, the money that are income from over the counter. If somebody pays a permit, if somebody is going to participate in the roundup, so it would be a peddler or a vendor permit, if they're going to build a house, credit card fees, those sort of things, you would call that over the counter. Things like our sales tax that we collect shouldn't be included in this report in the wrong place. So, two things are wrong with the report, in that if that doesn't belong here, so it skews the report and makes it incorrect, and then you shouldn't have four months of sales tax in one, at one month's report. So for it to tally that we have $310,000 income in the month of August is incorrect.
Why do we have four months of sales tax in there?
I'll just say that it was entered incorrectly, in error. Our...
So what?
Team member who made the mistake is aware of the mistake, so we won't do that again. But so this report isn't corrected, because...
You can't correct it.
You can't correct it, you don't.
You can't.
Let's explain that it is corrected in our system.
It is corrected.
You tell it, so the money is where it belongs.
When we discovered this, I let Peacock know immediately, because four months' worth of sales tax was already entered properly, using a journal entry. because four months' worth of sales tax was already entered properly using a journal entry. Should not have been put in on here, so she had to go in and back out all of this so it didn't double up on our financial statement, which it had. And the cash receiving entry cannot be avoided, cannot be removed, cannot be reversed. By the nature of what it is, we want to be able, you don't want somebody to be able to put something in and take it back out. Because then how do you account for that cash or that money or that deposit? This is a safety feature of this type of report. So.
So their journal entry did.
Yes. Journal entry is how all these were already put in. And then they got put in here after they were already journal entry. And.
This is transactional, correct? It shows the actual transaction, so the transaction will be removed even though the funds have been moved to the correct.
So Nicola went in and she backed out all of these. They were journal entry and reversed them in the general ledger. So the general ledger is correct.
So in your financial statement report, or see that you are being approved, it's in there, it's correct, it's not doubled up.
Right.
So we need to make sure that the.
And August is the only one that's in August because that's where it needs to be. Not May, June, July, and August, or whatever month it is.
So then, I just need to try to understand, you're saying eight fourteen, all these entries were made. And the entries are not duplicated themselves, they're just four entries.
The sales tax was already entered onto the general ledger via journal entry. They didn't need to be put in on cash receiving. And you don't do four months of sales tax income and cash receiving. It doesn't post it correctly.
You're saying this is four months?
Yes.
All put in on one date?
Yes. Should never have happened that way. So it's been fixed and that won't happen again.
So the next report we get in September will be, this will be there?
Correct. Yes, it will not be there. Not be there.
And I guess what I'm hearing is we can't correct this, so we're just going to.
Yes, that's why I didn't, we didn't want to submit it. And I could have printed it as an Excel spreadsheet and amended it. But the amended version that you guys got would not be the same as the Fund View and that creates a whole nother problem, so.
It's the report that can't be corrected, though.
This is the report, right. This is the report that can't be corrected.
Data's correct.
The data's correct, just the report.
Okay.
So we're not approving those.
It doesn't exist, just correct, it's not incorrect. So I left the items on the agenda so we could explain. And you have the coffee. But yeah, we don't want to approve it because it's, we know it's an incorrect report and it cannot be revised. For good safety, that's right. Yes, ma'am.
I assume it's Julie that made this mistake?
Yes.
And why is there four months backlog just sitting on her desk?
It's not sitting on her desk. I don't know why she entered them, because they were already entered by me through journal entry, by me and Nicola. So I'm not sure why they were even on there.
Nicola, when we're returning.
Her peacock is our CPA. It's our account.
But I do have a question.
Did you have another?
No.
Sorry. That was good.
Okay.
So I do have a question on page one. All right.
Okay.
On page one, when we had it up, and this has happened before, so I'm going to have basically the same question, I'm going to ask again. It doesn't balance, it's fifty-eight eleven out, and if fifty-eight eleven is the credit card fees, so why would the credit card fees be on this GL report and not balance to everything else on here?
The tallies are done internally in Fund View, so.
I would hope so. But all I'm asking is, item one hundred twenty-eleven, credit card fees, a fifty-eight dollars and eleven cents. Okay, that figure puts you out of balance from taking your payment types and your payment methods, which add up to one five five four twenty-four. And yet your report says it's one five five, uh, what else, four eighty-two. So it's fifty-eight eleven difference, and if fifty-eight eleven is that credit card fee. So I would say, why are we out of balance and not just how many fifty-eight eleven are added in?
The fifty-eight eleven is not a fee that we, it's a fee that the credit card company charges, not the city to. So I'm not, I don't know.
Okay, so this has happened before, I guess, I'd just like to know, if this is in Fund View, it's coming out of there, then it either should not or it should balance.
I think it's, I think that the explanation that we discussed before, this is an income report and that one item is charged to us. So honestly, if it wasn't on the page, it would make it easier to be clear. But we aren't removing things that are populated to the reports by accounting.
If it's not.
I mean, we could certainly do that and then it would balance. But then you don't see that we paid the fifty-eight dollars and eleven cents.
Hold on. We're paying a fee and this report says we got money coming in.
I'm just repeating what I think I've understood through this discussion about it, Eric. Why don't you let us verify?
Please.
With our CPA and make sure that we're giving you the right explanation.
Okay, because yeah, just.
Honestly, I hate this report.
Yeah, I do too.
Because what's really about a report is the one that you have that's got detail. And it has everything, whether it was over the counter or.
Oh, I hear that.
The financial statement.
If I have a question.
Yeah, it's all in the financial statement.
When you pay with a credit card, and the reason I notice is I just made payment, I paid my payment and I also had to make a second payment for the credit card fee. So it would be showing an income, wouldn't it not? Because it is a separate fee that was charged.
I'll have to verify.
I'll talk to the CPA.
I'm not sure how they set up. I'm not sure how Fund View has the credit card set up, so let me find out from Fund View.
Yeah, I'll scroll through it. Yeah.
Okay.
So more to come about that. We might do this one more time with the explanation and then retire this report and only rely on the financial statement, because it gives you every kind of transaction, not just one type.
Okay.
Okay, I think that covers all of our regular agenda items. The City Council of the City of Simonton, Texas will convene in a closed executive session on the twenty-first day of October, 2025, beginning at seven forty-seven P M.
Under section five fifty-one point through seven-one consultation.
Great. All right, the City Council of the City of Simonton, Texas ended its closed executive session at eight thirty-two P M on this twenty-first day of October, 2025. Oh, thank you.
I'm talking myself.
That's okay. Item seven was ready to begin an open session. Item eight, consider and take action resulting from executive session, there is no action to be taken. Item nine is reports. Wanted to share with everyone, the Simonton broadband expansion professional engineering services gave us a preliminary report. So probably a year ago, we shared that the Fort Bend County Commissioners Court, using grant funds, included Simonton in a broadband expansion project. It's underway, they're in the process of permitting. And they shared with us that the Simonton segment of the project includes approximately five hundred and ninety-four addresses, divided into two construction phases. Phase one is two hundred and forty locations and phase two is three hundred and fifty-four locations. Project completion is projected for September, 2026, with an internal target to complete and activate service in the field by mid-September, 2026. And then they gave us a list of pending permits, weather conditions, completion of some prerequisites. So hopefully by end of the next year, we'll have reliable broadband available to people living in the City of Simonton. More to come. There should be a whole lot more detailed information available for us to share at the next meeting. But we're getting there.
Hey.
For City Council reports, can you start with you, Angela? About the safety?
Oh, yes, yes. So we have our Simonton safety stampede tomorrow. We were doing the budget workshop, there was a line for safety and it's something that we all kind of talked about doing, having the city host an event. Really excited about it. We hope that all of our neighbors can come out and bring their kids. There's going to be tons of different vehicles out there. The Full Shore PD is bringing their cool Bronco. Constable's office is bringing vehicles and motorcycles, the fire trucks will be out. All different kinds of organizations promoting different safety. Talking about different safety and doing safety lessons as well for the kids. The city is also going to be cooking out there. We have somebody bringing a grill out, so we have purchased hamburgers and hot dogs and chips for everybody that comes out. So we're hoping for a really good turnout, so I hope you guys can all join us tomorrow. And it will be held at the Simonton Full Shore Fire Department from six to seven thirty.
Angela? Did y'all find a pit?
Yes, Susan LaDart is going to bring her Blackstone up. And I nicely told Justin that he was going to.
You thought I told you?
Yeah. That he was going to be cooking murders tomorrow night and hot dogs tomorrow night. So Andy and Eric, if you'd like to come help on the grill, that would be awesome. We do have our local Girl Scout troop coming out to serve food and clean up and be there for the community project, so it should be a good turnout, I'm excited.
What's the time to get?
Six to seven thirty.
Okay, I'll be at the Dozers meeting.
No, it's tomorrow, Dozers is Thursday.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Wednesday.
He's like, bring it. Now I have to go.
You're on the grill.
I am one.
Special thanks to Angela King for figuring out about this project. She went to the Fort Bend County Safety Event and lots of great ideas and context. And I mean, she made this entire thing happen. So thank you, Angela, for your hard work and all the phone calls are connected.
I will have to say that I was really excited about the Secret Service coming out and doing fingerprinting. But I did get confirmation today that because of the government shutdown, they can't come. So I really kind of pushed that at first, so I just want to make it clear that they can't come, so they won't be there.
We'll get them for next year's.
Yep, absolutely.
That is great.
They don't do anymore.
Can I enter a word to me? Isn't there another one this week?
Well, there is, but it's just.
I think it needs to be said.
Well, we've talked about, it's been on social media, our city has posted. We have an amazing venue around the corner in Wallace, the Three Bills Mission. And I love working with them and you guys know a lot of my past is working with nonprofits. So we are hosting a nonprofit kind of meet and greet there. And the reason for that, and I know it's not us per se, but if you want to be able to give back to the community, and what a better way to do that than allowing, you know, our law enforcement, our fire department, our local nonprofits to come out and utilize this amazing venue. So we do have an open house there Friday evening from six thirty to eight thirty as well.
Sounds great.
Yes.
Thank you, Angela. Any further reports, do you?
No.
Kelly, any reports?
I can give you none for council now.
Okay.
Keep something beautiful, but we could.
Go ahead.
Oh, just first, a public thank you to everybody that donated. Reyes Nursery, Todd and Rebel. Who else? I can't remember.
Doug, Sarah, Susan.
Yes. For donating to keep something beautiful so we could get all the flowers and all that put out in front of City Hall, at the monument and the post office. It looks amazing, it really does. And obviously to my fellow K S B members, thank you for coming out and getting your fingers dirty and sweating a little bit.
Good volunteers come out as well.
Yes, we did. Angie, Nance, and Sarah Ann, thank you. What else? K S B, as a reminder, we have our Christmas roundup, December sixth. I believe it has been finalized, we're moving it back to fourteen eighty-nine for this one. But we should be sending out announcements about that probably this week, I would say. But I hope to see you all there. Our pit alternators are still lined up for that. And of course, if y'all know of any vendors that we're not aware of, please let them know about it.
Great, thank you. Any reports? Any reports?
Yes. First of all, I'm going to the T M L conference on the twenty-eighth through thirty-first. I was supposed to be elected through this council to do that, but we didn't have the time, we never got to the agenda. However, I have asked, and the mayor has it, is resolutions of city-related bills that they have filed. So one of the things I would be doing is representing the city on approving or not approving those city-related bills. So what I would ask, and I know it's late, is I think the mayor, you said you would distribute that to the council, right?
I did.
Okay.
And we'll request a response by Friday, so that you have plenty of time.
Excellent. And so if you respond, fine, if you don't, fine, just looking for kind of consensus from the council on how y'all would like it answered to T M L. In addition, on the website, I did mention this to Cheyenne today. I did come into the office and talk to people. And I mentioned to Cheyenne that on the transparency section, there is what appears to be a trial balance where the audit from rela, is supposed to be, the representation letter. So I showed it to her and it's not a bad item. I mean, the trial balance looks good, it probably looks exactly what should be there for the next audit to proceed, which is what they would need, is basically this trial balance. So it's out on the public, it's out there. I said maybe she would want to put the representation letter and give this to the council. So I left that with her.
Okay. I'll have to ask her what.
It's really.
The audit and the letters for this most recently excluded audit are already out there. So is that not what you're asking about?
The letter, the letter, the letter of representation letter is not there. Where it's supposed to be is this. This is what's present. She'll show you because she pulled it up. In addition, you ready? Okay, and then we've had a discussion on that, we should, we should add the I J K N Lifer meeting onto the next agenda, if we can get that scheduled. And that's it.
Very great. Phil, any reports from you, sir?
No, ma'am.
All right. EDCs. Good to go, all right. Information requests, that is strictly for information, no action to be taken here.
I have a comment.
Sure.
All right, I want everybody to, if you haven't seen the agenda, we had thirty-three P I A requests, thirty-three. So I even up Cheyenne. I didn't know she wasn't going to be here, so how much hours, just in general, do you think this took? She said, honestly, I don't know, I've not got anything else to do but P I A requests. So since last meeting, it's what, forty, eighty, hundred and twenty-plus hours of per time? That's five or six thousand dollars. And a lot of them are anonymous and strange names and I kind of wish the names were on here. So I'd like to ask for an agenda next item, or that's the agenda, about starting to charge for the P I A request. And when I talked to the Attorney General's office, she said, yeah, as long as you keep it consistent with everybody. So if the mayor would advise me, I'd like for Phil to let us, whatever he needs to do, we don't want to. If the council agrees, if the council says, no, we don't want to, but thirty-three requests, this cost is probably about six thousand dollars, I ran easy quick numbers, it's probably more than that. So our taxpayer money is over stupid. Now, not everything's stupid, some things are good, people need it, they need the P I A. requests, but seriously, this is out of control, folks. This is out of control. So some of them are just doing it to do it. That, I'm just, I'm... Information requests are good, if they're good for the person that's getting information they need, but some of this stuff, we're doing tit for tat, let's move on, new council, it's time to get the city going, we gotta get this other stuff done. So I don't know if I need a motion or vote, or just get it on the agenda for next meeting?
I'm just, I'll need to...
Okay.
Are you, would you say that if there were charges, it could go toward having more help to do them, or you're just saying?
If we need...
Is there anything else that we needed?
If we need, well, hopefully just slow someone down, if the people really want the information, okay, the Attorney General's office, if Phil can, as long as you make it the same and charge hourly, I believe is what she said, it's been about a month since I spoke with her, and it's a quick phone call, but I know he would...
Yeah, there's specific restrictions in the number of copies, be a copy, if it's something available digital, you can send a link and don't charge for that and all that. Again, we have PIA folks at the office that all rally around, or rally behind us if that's the direction we want to go.
We have PIA officers.
But we can, we can at least do the assessment, again, the, the main thing, again, is Texas Public Information Act, we never want to discourage requests for information, the public is authorized that, and so it's, these aren't like a punishment or anything, it's just, usually it's to recover the cost of what it takes to get, get these things done in a reasonable amount of time, because the timeline is set by statute, et cetera. So again, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we can do the analysis if, if that's fine, and get, get at least recommendations to move forward next time, if not a complete ordinance.
Yeah, 'cause it was what I saw, some of these requests, I'd like to seriously, in your right, I agree a hundred percent, and I've used the FOIA requests too, to just make it fair to the city, so our city secretaries actually do work, not just by thought, so if you would squeeze a thought, you have to be fair.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
Thank you. If you look through these, the council, like, if I could, go ahead and look, my name appears many, many, many times, many times. A lot of that time that that young lady spent was answering PIR requests, requesting everything that Earth do on every day, every breakfast, every, et cetera, it's just ridiculous. It's actually, in my mind, vexatious. Phil, you should look at vexatious as being a process by which we could say we're not gonna answer, maybe? I had to give every book, every letter, every email, every text, everything that none of you ever have been asked for to her to disclose, so any emails I've done since I was on this council, any texts I've done to anyone on this council, right? Everything, including, nothing text to my wife was asked for, and, and brought out to the public, so it's out in the public now, all right? So they can use it any damn way they want, right? And I think that's just harmful to us, to all of us, I think it's harmful. And I think it sets a precedent, which is why we get this onslaught, and then there's the other side, there's two sides to this, I don't know who wants it, who's doing it, some of them are hiding, right? I have no problem, it's out there. Do what you want, come after me or you want, I don't care, not gonna find anything. But it's costing this city a lot of money, it's costing Greve, it's costing Cheyenne, it's costing all of us, and it's separating this city, it's separating the city, whether we believe it or not. And so I don't know what each of us can contribute to that, or not contribute to that, or talk to people and try to settle it down, but that might be what we need to do. And I'm saying, a federal councilman, to do what you can, if you can, at all, to calm this thing down, because personally, I don't care, I'll give you anything. And now I have a new one that she just gave me today, to go back to January of twenty-five, when I wasn't even on this council, and asked for the same stuff, I'm not gonna answer that. I'm gonna actually say, you can go file a subpoena with the courts, and then get me to answer, because I'm not, I'm not...
I don't want to go too much further, because that's not specifically on the agenda, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but like, that, that request that you're talking about isn't on this agenda, correct?
It will be on this.
Well, that, that's right.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, I agree.
Okay, that's why, I just wanted to stop before we start talking about items not on the agenda, that's all.
Got it, thank you.
All right.
I'm done.
Thank you.
More than done.
Item twelve is adjournments, it is eight forty-eight PM. Thank you all, I'm counting and saying.